And for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to do a call to order and start the meeting of the Lamoir Planning Commission at five thirty P M. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Commissioner Kane. Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
May.
Present.
Commissioner Mead.
Here.
Commissioner Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Etchagon.
Here.
And I am Commissioner Couch and I'm here also. Great, we have a hundred percent attendance. Thank you, everybody.
You forgot one.
You too.
Huh?
Bob's here too.
Man.
One minute.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Clement. Here, I think. Yes. I did miss you. Okay, thank you. Hundred percent. All right. Next item will be public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission. On items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each. It is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution of the commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda once the item has been called and the chair opens the items to the public. But that said, we would like to public comment at five thirty two P M. No. Christie, anything emails or anything? Okay. With no public comment, nobody, we will go ahead and close public comment at five thirty two P M. Next item number four, approval of minutes. We had our last regular scheduled meeting on May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review? The last minutes and do you have any questions or concerns?
I'm going to approve the minutes, May thirteen meeting.
I have a first or I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. Um, we'll go ahead and do a vote. Commissioner King. Commissioner Brewer.
Hi.
Commissioner Mead.
Hi.
Commissioner Franklin.
Hi.
Mr. Clement.
Hi.
Commissioner Etchagon.
Hi.
And I'm Commissioner Couch, I vote I as well. Thank you. All right, number five, report and recommendation. A request by Lennar Homes of California LLC. There's just, well, make sure we point that out. It's not Inc., it is LLC. To extend approval of vesting tentative subdivision map two zero one seven dash zero one. Track number nine twenty and accompany planning entitlements for one year. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commission. If you've been on the commission a while, this sounds like deja vu. This is the fifth uh, one-year extension request that we've gotten on this uh, tract nine twenty. But Christie, I can tell you they are, they have been diligently pursuing this and um, I believe all the the technical, like the improvement plans, the final map has been approved technically. Um, there's just a couple of things holding it up and then they'll be taking it to council for, for approval. So, uh, but we don't think that's going to happen before August fourteenth and so we're recommending approval of another one-year extension, which would take this to August fourteen, twenty twenty five. Like I said, this is the fifth extension. They're allowed up to six discretionary extensions and so they would have one more. But we're hoping this is the one that gets it done.
Great, thank you. Hey, Steve, real quick question. Um, let's say they do the sixth extension. This is just for educating the council.
Yeah.
Real quick. Um, and that expires. What do they have to do then, once they've reached all their extensions? And this is not just Lennar, it's anybody.
Anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we actually have one in that position. We have a map that was approved in tw- two thousand six. And because of there were there were automatic recession extensions if during the Great Recession that that legislature did, there were some COVID extensions, the legislature did, and the six discretionary extensions. All of those have been used up on that map. It's set to expire in September, August? Oh, it's next year? Okay. So one more year. But once it's final, once everything has been exhausted, the map has expired and they would have to start the process over
Okay.
with a new tentative map.
Okay, gotcha.
And so, and then that new map would have to meet our current conditions, which might be more restrictive than they were.
Yeah.
You know, years ago.
And is that part of like setbacks for houses or anything like that? Is it?
Yeah, any new, any new requirements we've done since then, they'd have to meet the new requirements, yes.
Okay.
Verification then, are they the current plan is under any laws or whatever? I guess they get grandfathered into when they applied in two thousand six, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so the, the, when a when an application for a map or for a conditional use permit is applied for you, we're, we follow the laws that are on the books on the day that they've applied for, that we've accepted their application. So, if that, so extending it is a benefit to the developer because they can keep the, the laws that they've got, so.
Great, thank you. Do we have a representative from Lennar or anybody that wants to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tom Davis for Lennar Homes. Um, I'm here just to answer any questions you may have regarding the, the track map and the extensions in place. Um, but I think they've already been covered mostly. And we do ask it. You provide us another extension for one more year. We do think at this point, based upon work with the city staff as well as outside sources, we will be able to get started on, on this uh, second phase of nine twenty uh, before the next extension comes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so what we could do is we'll go ahead and open up to public comment before we ask questions. So at this time, we'll open it to public comment on fi- at five thirty eight P M. And anything, Christie, on your part? Okay, it doesn't look like we have any public comment. We'll close public comment at five thirty eight P M and we'll open it up to the Commissioners for any questions or concerns. Or discussion.
Seems like it's been a long time coming. Looking forward to it being done, as others are probably.
Good. Well. Looks like that's it. There's no other public or discussion.
I guess I got, I got a couple of questions then. Um, so what, sorry, what what was phase one? I mean, what will signal the completion of phase one and what is phase two? What are we doing in phase two? What happens? Like actual dirt gets moved or?
Yeah, phase two is, is an extension of the, of the neighborhood, the subdivision. So there'll be more homes.
Okay, okay, that was phase one, the one that's there? Okay, got it.
Yes.
I meant, I thought it was like different phases of, of what's of the second portion.
No, it's a new, new neighborhood or extension of the neighborhood.
Okay.
To the north. And it'll include a park. And I think expansion of the ponding basin.
Uh, where's nine twenty at again?
It's, um, it's on the east side of Liberty Drive, just north of Hanford Omona Road.
Oh, okay.
So phase one is on the corner and phase two would be north of that.
Gotcha, okay.
I got another question. Okay, so I mean, what other interests should we consider? I mean, the applicant has six discretionary uh, extensions, which I mean, okay, it's not really our, our purview to ask him why, you know, or what, what's preventing or what's happening, you know? Uh, is there anything else to be considered as far as like? Is there anything else to be considered for the, for the city's best interest?
Um.
Like are other?
Speaking, I mean, speaking generally, this is an opportunity where if you wanted to revisit a condition of approval, you could do that. I rarely see that happen on extensions of, of maps. Usually if cities approve the map, they want to see it to completion. It's in our, it's in our best interests as well because otherwise you've got a half-built neighborhood.
Yeah.
And nobody sitting in the driver's seat to finish it. So, so that's why we, that's why the staff recommends approval unless we know of some reason why we shouldn't, which I, I, I've never had that happen, so. It's, it's just, it's part of the procedure. The state law says the maps are good for two years and after that you need to do extensions, so.
I have a question. What's hap- what will happen with the road? Because right now the road goes through phase one. It's all done basically. Will that road be continued?
Are you talking about Liberty Drive?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be widened the same as it was in phase one.
End of phase two.
To the, to the north end of phase two, yes.
Regards to our, it seems like our sewer systems, water, freezing, things like that. This is such an old plan and things have obviously occurred.
Sure.
Now in two thousand six, has that all been taken into consideration? Were the cities still looking to be able to withhold that extra pillow?
Yes, yeah, the, the the, the approvals, if you remember, there's, there was another map approved north of this, nine thirty five. Both of those, um, there, the line has capacity to serve both of those, yes. There's gonna be a new a new line in Liberty Drive that's gonna go um, to the north of nine thirty five, which is at the Glendale alignment. And that line is then gonna head east to serve um, Lacy Ranch. So that'll be a different line than what these two lines are on, these two subdivisions are on.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
I was just gonna comment that I know we've had a few residents that live in phase one come here to complain to us that they haven't got their park.
Yes.
So it'd be good to finally see this happened so that uh, they can have their park.
Does the park require to be completed before phase two can start or does it, is the park? Is there gonna be a park in this phase two?
Yes.
There is. Or is it required to be completed upon the last, final of the last house? What, what is your?
Yes, the park is part, so when, uh, when, uh, when a developer builds a subdivision, they have the, the, the improvement plans, which are the, the public improvements, the sewer, the water, the streets, parks.
Hmm.
Um, and so the, there's a subdivision improvement agreement that you guys don't see, but the city council um, approves.
Hmm.
At, they approve it at the same time they approve the final map. At the developer then does the construction and then the city inspects everything and, and then when the city is satisfied that everything has been built, then they, then you take that back to council to, to say you, the, I forget what the phrase is right now, but um, then the city makes a determination that yes, you have built everything you're supposed to build. So until they do that, there's bonds in place and so it's in the developer's interest to get all of those things done and, and completed.
Um, so here it is, I apologize. Number seven on, I don't know what page that is, the park shall be constructed and open to the public for use prior to the final inspection of the fifth new home constructed in phase two.
Oh, well, there you go.
So by the fifth home, which is, will be probably pretty quick, once they final it.
So they need to start it.
Yeah.
As soon as they can.
Yeah, I got you. Okay. And that way, all, everybody in phase one can now use the park and going forward phase two. Okay. Gotcha. Very good. Commissioners, anything else? Can I get? Sorry, hold on here. Somebody like to make a motion to approve? Lennar's. What's that?
No, some move to a room.
Yes. I wouldn't, what are we gonna say about this? LLC, okay, gotcha. There it is. We need to make sure they see it. So adopt the resolution.
The proposed motion there?
So what we gotta do is say adopt the resolution with the revisions, instead of calling it Lennar Homes of California Inc., it has to be, say, LLC. So if anybody wants to do the first, they can include that language in there. Correct. Okay. Mr. Kane, did you want to make it first?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, so move to approve uh, and adopt resolution number two, twenty twenty four dash oh four with the revisions to the title Lennar Homes of California LLC.
Perfect, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay, great. We'll go ahead and do a vote. All right. Commissioner Mead.
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Clement.
Hi.
Commissioner Kane.
Hi.
Commissioner Brewer.
Hi.
And I'm Commissioner Couch, I vote I as well. The resolution is adopted.
Me too.
Etchagon, how am I missing this? I'm sorry.
You're not used to having.
Looking, I usually write all the names down and I apologize.
Not used to all seven commissioners. I know.
Commissioner Etchagon.
Hi.
I also. That's, there's seven zero. Thank you, approved. All right. Move to item number six, public hearing. Sorry. Uh, let's see, yep. Public comment and consideration for adoption of resolution number two zero two four dash zero four approving conditional use permit number two zero two four zero one, a request by Beal Properties Day and Night Market to allow the onsite sale of alcoholic beverages, which are type twenty-one alcohol and beverage control ABC license for off-site consumption at ten North Beal Avenue, Haven Beal Ha- Beal Haven Av- Haven Drive in the city of Lamoir. And determining that the project is category exempt from the requirements of the California or SEQA or Class One. Steve, take her away.
Thank you. So this site um, has an existing uh, mini mart. It was approved by your commission uh, with CUP twenty twenty one dash oh one. Uh, they later came back to ask for an ex- uh, extending the conditional use permit to allow sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, which is a class twenty ABC license. That was approved by your commission with CUP twenty twenty one dash oh three. And um, now they're asking for a change in the type of ABC license to go from beer and wine only to, to full beer, wine and spirits, when it only be sold for off-site consumption. For the record, just wanted to state, there was a typo in the public hearing notice. It showed the wrong APN. Uh, the correct APN is shown in your staff report and on the resolutions. Um, it's zero two three dash four eight zero dash zero four five.
Okay.
And this is ten North Bell Haven Drive. Um, so the, the real only difference is going from, from type of license from beer and wine only to beer, wine and spirits. That type of license allows off-site consumption only, so the type that you would usually expect at a mini mart or a liquor store. Um, and does allow uh, people under twenty-one to be on site. We um, looked at the looked at it, it's, you know, it's typical mini mart. Uh, we didn't see the need to change any of the conditions that we already added when we approved the beer and wine CUP and so we're recommending approval with the same conditions as were approved in the, with the beer and wine CUP, which is typical of what we usually um, put on mini marts.
Right?
So, okay, questions?
Is, is there a limit to the amount of licenses that can be held within the city?
There is. Um, and it's, it's ABC that controls that. So if someone wants to, if someone applies to ABC and they go over, they're going over the limits and it's based on kind of like neighborhoods. If they go over the limit, then ABC will send us a notice and we also have to approve a it's a phrase called going blank on it. Necessity. Yeah. So we would bring, I think we've done that before. It usually happens in the downtown because there's, there's like more people selling alcohol in the downtown. Um, this has, isn't happening here because they're on the edge of town and there's not that many other uh, vendors out there with ABC licenses.
The first time that they came up, did, did it require a CUP for just beer and wine or?
It did.
Okay, so anytime they modify it or?
So the zoning ordinance, yeah, the zoning ordinance requires a CUP for any alcohol sales of any type.
Oh, okay.
And, and it also, and so with what we usually put as a condition is to say that if they um, want to intensify the type of license that they want, they need to come back to us for an amendment to their CUP, which is what is happening right now.
I got you, okay.
But there hasn't been any issues out there. There are no, no public safety issues.
Yeah, gotcha, okay. Okay, we'll probably open it up for public comment. Okay, we'll open it for public comment at five fifty-two P M.
Hi Commissioners, I'm Trevor Beal, CEO of Day and Night Markets and Beal Properties and I'm available to answer any questions you all may have. I think that staff described um, the events here in the, the request uh, pretty, you know, accurately and so I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Christie, did you have anything? Nothing, okay. All right, doesn't look like we have any public comments. We'll close public comment at five fifty-two P M and then we can open it up to the Commissioners for discussion questions.
Steve, did notices go out to the public or was this, was it just posted?
For for any type of public hearing that, that we have, we put a notice in the newspaper, we post it at their normal posting sites and we send a mailed notice to any property owners within three hundred feet of the site.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's
I was gonna say.
Two, yeah.
Is there anything within three hundred feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And most people, you know, I would think, look at the notice by the address, not the APN number. We, we always put
Oh, yeah.
We always put APNs so that, so that it, so that the site can be precisely identified.
What, what zone is it in? It's in a
It's in a regional commercial zone, yes.
Okay. Great. Anybody else? Questions, concerns? All right, thank you, Steve. All right. Well, we can take this up for vote if you'd like. Do I have a first?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh five. Approving conditional use permit number twenty twenty four dash oh one for the public convenience and necessity of the coordinates and the findings and conditions with the resolution.
All right, great. We have a first, we have a second.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second, great. All right, we will take a vote. Watch this, I'm gonna get everybody's name.
Let's see.
Okay, here we go. Commissioner Kane. Commissioner Brewer.
Hi.
Commissioner Mead.
Hi.
Commissioner Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Clement.
Hi.
And I am, nope, Commissioner Etchagon.
It's closed, hi.
That was a joke. And then I am Commissioner Couch, I vote I as well. All right, resolution has passed. People are gonna look at this YouTube and think we're, okay. All right, number seven, director's report. Who gets that privilege?
Right, forget. Um, in uh, in the, at the May meeting, you made some recommendations about zoning ordinance text changes. Uh, we took those to the city council. At the first reading, there were a number of questions, uh, various questions about different topics. In the end, um, if all the text amendments were approved with one change and that had to do with when uh, when we allow a driveway, a second driveway to be put in at the house, um, we had said that that should be for access to the backyard or the side yard only and not to be a parking area and the city council um, wanted us to strike that provision and so they could still do the driveway, but they can park in it if they, if they want to. So they, um, the thinking was why should we let them build it and then not let them use it? I think that was the comment.
Okay.
So.
What, what's going to happen with the curb in front then?
Yeah, they.
They, they left in the provision that if you do put in a second driveway, you have to build a driveway and a
A driveway approach.
A driveway approach. Yeah, so we don't do the uh, uh, two-by-fours in the, in the
Yeah.
type of thing.
Or tear up the sidewalk, okay.
Yeah.
So with that, here's a question. Normally, uh, what we, the whole reason you had done the second driveway was to gain access to this backyard. So now that they strike that, can anybody now bail, build a second driveway? Or is it only to gain access?
It's only, the way it was worded.
Yeah.
The you can only get it if you have ten feet wide in the side yard.
Okay. Gotcha.
If you have a reason to get back there.
Between the next, your house and the next, your residence and the next residence.
No, between your residence and the, in your property line.
And the property line.
Yeah.
So.
So all of the Lennar homes going in that have five-foot setbacks on the
Yeah, anything.
None of them can have a second.
Can't have that.
Okay, I got you.
Um, uh, the other thing, so one of the, some of the changes we made uh, were, were with highway oriented signs. And so after that was adopted, then we, Maverick had had us, had their sign application in, so we reviewed it based on the new ordinance, uh, made some changes and they're, they'll be coming back. So, uh, that will probably be happening soon too. So it'll be pretty big.
Yeah.
For what we're used to, but I think it'll, it'll, it'll be fine.
Every time I see the field cloud, I'm like, they're starting and then they don't. So, that's okay.
I saw a bunch of materials stacked up.
I know.
Back in it, so.
And then I see the cars kind of build up again and then they go away and I'm like, okay, they're starting and then the cars come back again. So there's a car what is that, a wrecking yard across the street?
Hmm.
So they sign up park there sometimes, so on that property. But.
Um, there's a few other projects that we're talking to people about, but we can't disclose those yet, so.
Gotcha.
Stay tuned.
Okay, great.
Question.
Yeah.
What was approved in oh six that is still not done yet? I can't.
That was the Victory Village one out by the, out by the college.
Even, even though so much of it's been changed and
There was a little bit left that he, that he retained after, after the, after the Navy bought most of it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I think eighty homes maybe.
Hmm.
Fifty-two homes, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Do you get a feel that they will be able I don't know if you're allowed to say, like, do you feel like they're gonna build before they expire next year or?
I wouldn't bet on it.
Okay, that's fine. He's like, I'm being recorded.
But I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying, you know.
No, I understand. If you can't answer, it's okay.
I hope it, I hope they do.
Yes, there you go. Wonderful answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, he goes.
Okay. Any other questions? For the director?
Yeah. Did I miss anything?
Nope. Christie, anything like that? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Your chairs, your pants.
On that property that around the the over towards Vineyard Inn as it goes around D Street?
Hmm.
Hmm.
Is that it moving at all? I mean, uh, I mean, that thing's been approved. And uh, there, there were some questions about
Oh, the affordable housing?
Right.
Uh, yes, they, they're going through building permit stage and um, the, all of the improvements, the off-site improvements that were approved for funding, you know, to extend sidewalks beyond the site and everything that we've gotten the go-ahead and that You know, to extend sidewalks beyond the site and everything that we've gotten the go-ahead and that uh, design work has started.
Okay.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to number eight, commission reports or requests. Anybody have any thing they'd like to add or request or anything?
Do we request cooler weather?
I know, huh? Denied.
Well.
Not up to me.
Hey, I tried.
I know, huh? All right, well, I'd just like to add, and I say this every time, and I hope it don't sound like a broken record, but thank you to the staff. You guys work so hard behind the scenes to get things going. Um. Let's see, Christie, didn't you go to a? Conference or something on the coast for businesses? Was that you? Try to get businesses here. It was in March? Okay, we're past that. I'm way behind the times. Okay. And thank you, everybody, for dealing with me today. I had a very. Busy day at work and it didn't end until right before I walked in here. I was on the phone and everything, so I apologize to everybody, but thank you for sticking with me. I've been tripping on my words today, so. Anyways, with that, we can adjourn. At six oh one P M.